The January 5th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie City government. Our meetings are typically held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to speak at that time, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date. The city manager can be reached at (949) 8412, and we would need to know your name, the phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, we will have an opportunity for unscheduled speakers. If you have questions, please contact, again, the city manager's office at (949) 8412. We'll begin the meeting today with calling the HRA meeting to order. Do we need to do roll call for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Mr. Webster.
Aye.
Here.
Councilmember Mink.
Aye.
Chair Taylor, please.
Aye. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the HRA meeting held on December 1st, 2015?
Move approval.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The first item, actually the only item on the HRA meeting agenda, is a request for approval of Amendment 2 to the housing project agreement for Eden Gardens. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, members of the HRA. We have before you a Second Amendment. There had been a First Amendment previously, you may recall, from last year for our Eden Gardens development. This is our green neighborhood that we've seen a lot of positive development with. As was the case with the First Amendment, we've seen quite a bit of development of the homes in that neighborhood, and as you can see with the report in front of you, that we're down to 14 remaining lots of the 36 homes that were part of the development. And we've been able to be flexible along the way to have a portion of those homes be in the mid-market range, homes that are somewhere in the $350,000 to $400,000 range in addition to those that were maybe closer to $500,000 in range. So this entire development, as you know, was set up as a sustainable neighborhood, but we were able to work with a developer that was also able to offer homes in that mid-market price range. So this amendment comes before you tonight to allow a little bit more flexibility with a certain number of sites. With the 14 remaining lots, the feeling of the developer and staff is that there can be, of the 14 homes, a mixture of the homes in price ranges between $372,000 and $440,000. So currently, the agreement is set up in a way that limits those homes to prices, I believe that's more in the $372,000 to $400,000 range. And our feeling is that providing a little bit more flexibility in price, that the homes will sell faster and be built quicker, but are also in affordable range. Quite frankly, I think some of the concerns with people that are purchasing the home might be some debt that they had, or some other, you know, their credit profile where they have enough assets and enough income, but they might have other issues related to their profile where it can limit the ability to be able to finance the home in a certain price range. So I think the feeling was by offering up more of a range with the home prices, that we're still keeping much of that mid-market availability, but it's also helping the entire development fill out. And as I said, you know, we're past halfway, well, passed halfway in terms of the homes. So before you tonight is the change in the agreement that simply breaks down the price ranges within those 14 remaining homes, because our development agreement is very specific to that currently.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell?
Yeah, I have one question. Are these going up in price because people want more green things, like they want solar roofs that are adding to the price? Are these going up because people want fancy built-ins and, you know, larger homes than had been planned, or what's the background for this?
I think Councilmember Nelson, it can be a mix of both. It's my understanding, and I know that a representative of the developers here to answer this question as well, that it may be more related to the finishes and some of the items within the home, because the green features that are available, I think, are available to each and every home. There aren't as many additions to those homes. Those are standard to the neighborhood. But I'm not sure if Mr. Hanisch is here, he could provide more background.
Yeah, hi, my name is Matt Hanisch, and I'm representing Homestead Partners in Eden Gardens, the developer on the project. To answer your question, it is correct that it's a little bit of a mixture of both, in that, you know, we originally started the project in 2013, and the pricing was based on numbers that started out in 2013. So since then, we've obviously seen some inflation in costs, which go into, you know, come into play here. And then the other piece we have is people wanting to, you know, further amenitize their home, or they have, you know, they have three children and they decide that they want a bedroom in the lower level, and they don't have the ability to do that as part of, you know, as part of the project now as it stands, and still stay under the price cap that's in place. As far as your question about the green features, the original proposal was that all homes would be advanced GreenPath certified through the GreenPath program with the Builders Association of the Twin Cities, which requires that each of the homes receives a Home Energy Rating Score of, a HERS score of 55 or less. We've actually been ratcheting that number down as we've built homes. We're finding ways to tighten that up. The most recent closing received a HERS score of 47. So, you know, we're continuing to improve upon that as well.
But I had thought that if all of these would be solar-ready, if people wanted solar on them when they built them, they could have it.
They can add solar on them if they would like to add solar on them, and that is one of the options that's available on all of homes. To date, I believe we have one home that's actually sold, where they've actually put the solar panels on the house. All of the homes are designed to be solar-ready, so the trusses are built in such a way that they'll support the solar panels, the wiring chase is in place, you know, the panel is set up so that it could be added on at any time. So even in the future, if people decide they can't afford to do the solar piece now, you know, if some incentives come up that make it more appealing to them in the future, they have the ability to do so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move to approve Amendment 2 to the housing project agreement for Eden Gardens.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us back into our regular council meeting, and I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or subtractions, Mr. Getchell?
Mayor, no, I would just add that the only item, and we can get to this on consent, is Item N on consent, the very last item, is for a lease for new thermal imaging cameras with the fire department. We're asking that, that when that is approved at consent, that if there are any minor changes made, that's with the approval of the city attorney. So when you approve the consent agenda, that's conditioned on city attorney approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council workshop held on Tuesday, December 1st.
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date.
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Move approval of Items A through N on the consent calendar with a condition on Item N that our city manager just talked about.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. First public hearing is Southwest Station PUD Amendment. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have before us a request for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 11.38 acres, and a zoning district amendment within the commercial or regional service zoning district, and a site plan review also on the 11.3 acres, which is Southwest Station at 13500 Technology Drive. A notice of this public hearing was published in the special Christmas Eve edition of the Eden Prairie News and was mailed to 167 property owners. As you know, because this was discussed in workshop downstairs with the Southwest LRT Green Line Extension project coming, Southwest Station will be either the beginning of the line or the end of the line, depending on how you view it. And as part of the proposed project, there is a planned removal of two existing buildings and the construction of a parking ramp addition, a construction of a new indoor waiting area, and other site changes associated with light rail transit coming to Southwest Station. The Metropolitan Council is not required to gain local approval for these projects, but they have agreed to work in partnership with the city and participated in the public process, and an opportunity for staff review, a public hearing, plan commission review and comment on all of these changes, mainly the ramp addition at Southwest Station. So as I said, the big piece of this is the addition of the 450-vehicle parking ramp at the site, and asking for the council to consider consent. Tonight, the project office is here to provide a presentation and an overview of this PUD amendment prior to you taking action. And I will also note, prior to them coming up, providing their presentation and then holding the public hearing, the plan commission did have a number of comments that you can see in the packet and in your annotated agenda that were included and taken into consideration with this project, and it was recommended for approval at their December 7, 2015 meeting. So with that, the project office can provide an overview of the project before you hold the public hearing and take any action.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Kronzer. I'm the design manager with Southwest Light Rail Project Office. And you saw a sneak peek of this presentation a few minutes ago. So I will go into a little more detail based on our current designs. We are approaching 90% design on the project as a whole. So what you see here is what the planning commission saw in early December, and what Southwest Transit Commission saw later in December. So it's a very similar presentation, but we will go through the detail. All right, presentation. There we are. So we're going to talk about the site and the parking structure, a little bit more on the site design and landscape design, and talk a little bit more about the actual LRT and bus station, and a little bit on the branding of the site as well. So here's the overall alignment of the Southwest Light Rail project. As everyone is noting, there is the beginning station here at the end of the line at Southwest Station. You also know on this plan, you'll see the deferred town center station, which is the open box, just up the line from Southwest Station. Sarah went over this downstairs, so this is our rough schedule. Important to the schedule is our completion of the environmental process, which is targeted to the spring of this year, and also our record of decision that will happen, that doesn't work anymore, this summer, and then heavy construction starting in 2017. So here's the site. You're all very familiar with the site. Ruby Tuesdays on the east side, the former Santorini site coming around to the west, the Strip Center, Culvers, and then the existing Southwest Transit office building, which is that blue square that's connected to the existing parking structure with the bus gates. So Culvers is a full acquisition for the project that will be owned by Met Council. And then there will be also some easements with Southwest Transit that are still under negotiations. So that's an ongoing discussion that we're having with their commission and staff. One of the things we start to do when we start looking at the architectural design of a site is, we wanted to analyze the existing structures on the site in the context. So we spent some time looking at the existing parking structure. It's made out of primarily brick, some copper metal panels, some buff-colored stucco, and some glass. And we kind of pulled back our view and started looking at the broader context, and really noticed that darker buildings tend to fit in better in the Eden Prairie context. There's a lot of water, there's a lot of natural features in Eden Prairie, as you're all aware. So we felt what we were starting from with existing structure is a really good place to start from, from an architectural perspective. So our approach here is not to copy the existing structure, but complement that in a slightly more modern way, which also turns out to be a very cost-effective way for us as well. So here's the overall site plan. The white box in the middle is the existing structure. What you see off to the left is the LRT platforms, and then the LRT tracks coming behind the existing ramp around Ruby Tuesdays, and then off up to the Eden Prairie Center area. A couple of things I want to talk about, the improvements that are happening with the So the intersection that you currently enter into the facility between Santorini's and Caribou, there'll be an added left turn lane out of there. That is a fully controlled intersection right now, so we're adding some capacity to get out to Technology and Prairie Center Drive, and ultimately out to 212. There is a small property acquisition right along the LRT alignment at Ruby Tuesdays. Going up around near the condos, there's a little sliver up just below the word "site", there is a small silver property acquisition from the Southwest condos for a subtly realigned bus loop. And as I mentioned before, Culvers is a full acquisition. So where Culvers is sitting, this sort of darker gray box, is kind of the second access point. So there's two vehicle entry points to this expanded parking structure. One is the existing entry, and the second one is on the Culver site. And these structures communicate to each other, so if I'm on the second structure level of the existing, I can drive a car to the second level of the expanded part. So someone who comes in one end, exit the other. Bus patrons can park the same place as the train patrons can. So it's a fully integrated facility where there's not signs for this is LRT parking, this is bus parking. So someone who comes to the site will not know a difference. We won't know, no one will know if they're riding the bus or riding the train. They will not have to make those decisions to drive up ramps to find a bus stall versus an LRT parking stall.
And the size of that ramp is additional 450, so we've got 900 existing with Southwest Transit, and you're adding 450 stalls.
Correct. And it's, exactly. Some of the other improvements were rebuilding the interior bus waiting area, which is off to the north side of the new ramp. We have a covered drop-off area for passenger drop-off and passenger pickup. Another landscape improvement that you saw downstairs, this is the base landscape project design. The darker areas in the interior of the bus loop and some of the areas closer to technology are stormwater areas where water will collect for a day or two after an event and will dry out. So there is some standing water where the existing county ditch goes through the site, which is the blue areas in the middle of the site. And then the brown areas are areas that would dry out. So there's a variety of landscape design on the site. We did discuss the locally funded improvements. I can come back to that if you have additional questions. This is a zoom-in of the LRT platform and the bus platform. So you see two LRT trains in the station, so those are the kind of sausage links, the white ones, so there's two of those trains in the station. So there's a boarding platform on either side of those trains. Those are the lighter gray, longer bars. And then going up the page, you can kind of see some zigzaggy darker gray lines. Those are the glass enclosures that have the heating elements in. So someone waiting for the bus could stand on either side of that, depending which way the wind is coming from. We do know that the winds do come from the north and the west, so standing what appears to be on the LRT side would actually protect the bus riders a little bit better in those elements. So we've got this flexibility of enclosures and heat. There also is a canopy that goes out to the curb of the bus pickup areas. There are five gates proposed. Today, there are four gates, so there's an additional bus capacity gate for Southwest Transit. The white area off to the upper right corner, that's the interior bus waiting area. It is about twice the size of the current bus waiting area. It has public restrooms, it has vending machines, it has a break area and restrooms for bus and train operators, and likely Metro Transit Police could have a break area in that facility as well. We've got a couple of interior pictures we can show you. So really building off of the quality level of that existing facility, we're looking at wood ceilings, I think we're looking at polished concrete floor, and a lot of glass. This is a basic level of the additional parking. Kind of off to the bottom right corner is where it ties into the existing ramp. So you can see how there's those, where those gray arrows are is where the auto's connecting to the two different sides of the structure. It's a little bridge. Okay, so this again is looking east on Technology Drive. So the station is branded Southwest Station. That's its current name, that's going to be its name moving forward. But it's also co-branded with Southwest Transit and Metro Transit. So you can see up in the top of that brick elevator core, there's the Southwest Transit logo, and below that, there's the red T with the word Metro. So that is the LRT system branding, is the T-Metro, and then Southwest Transit, we're picking up their existing logos. So we're hoping that people will call us Southwest Station and understand that this multimodal connection. A couple of other things about the architecture here, this metal panel is, as Sarah was holding up downstairs, it's concave, it has three different levels of perforation, and one of the recommendations from the planning commission was to look at a couple of different tones of the brown metal color. So that's something we're looking at as exactly what that finish is, if it's an anodized finish, or if it's a metallic paint. That's still in our development. But looking at to try to create a flexibility and a variety with those panels. The big idea is to make this facade look like abstracted fabric, so with the different densities of perforation. And there's also areas where we may not even install panels, so you can see right into it, versus having a metal panel with the perforations. Another one of the suggestions, we can go to the image again, from the planning commission was to add more metal at the corner closest to technology, which will help in two ways, and it's a really good suggestion. It would screen the car visibility, so if you're outside on the trails, you'll see less of the cars looking up if there's more metal panels at that corner, and also it'll help to block the headlight movement. So we will have a metal panel at every floor at that headlight level. While you might see some play of light, which is one of the kind of interesting things about this design with the concave metal panel and the light, both the sunlight and the car light coming through, it has this kind of play of texture on the surface, something we're quite excited about. Moving on. So this is a look coming up 212. On the far left side is the elevator tower that's new to the project, that goes directly into the interior bus waiting area. So the existing ramp is basically coming off the page on the left side. And then in foreground is the bus loop, and you can see the train and the bus gate area. This is a shot looking straight at the existing elevator tower. So the retail building is directly to the right of this view. The existing Culver building is just cut off the left side. So you can see how we've got a base of brick on that first level, and how the metal panels kind of are held up above that base brick. So this is the main pedestrian access from Technology Drive. We're back at the bus loop here. We're looking towards that new elevator tower, that brick tower. Here's a zoom-in of that. So here you can see again the glass interior closures. You can see a train in the station, a bus in the station, and there's about 25 feet of station. You can step off a bus, walk about 25 feet and get on the train. So that's a very seamless connection between the buses and the trains here. Also, you can see the canopy that's over the bus area there. And we're looking straight in towards the waiting area, and the next shot here is looking exactly out the other way. So you can see the wood ceiling. We have a service counter, very similar, that would be shared between Metro Transit and Southwest Transit. The scene area, and then on the left edge is where the, at the parallel to the train platform. Here's a zoom-in of the metal panels. So you can see how the concavity of these metal panels is starting to, what that would look like at the corner, because it is concave, you have this sort of scalping effect, which will add a fair amount of visual interest at the corner. You can see a little bit better how the different levels of perforation of the metal panels can provide visibility through. So some of those slots are actually, there's no metal panels, and some of them have a higher level of density. I should also mention that we have found the brick to match exactly, so that'll be an exact match to the brick. And one of the other things the planning commission brought up, which we were thinking as well, was to look at more of the warm tones of the whites. There is some buff color on that existing structure. So we are looking at, while it may still appear to be white, it's going to be a warmer white color.
More similar to what's on the existing.
Yeah, and there's actually some white paint in that existing ramp on the ceiling, so it's going to work that together. So that's what I have for you.
So you're going to warm up the whites?
Yes, yes, yes.
I've got a question on, looking at the landscape, and your pictures all seem to be trees. And right now, in the existing structure, there's a lot of flowers. It's been one of the things that's made that a very nice area. And I don't see anything on here that indicates you're going to do some flowers, maybe some native grasses, but that's not anywhere near the same. So where are the flowers that are going to go in here that are being ripped up from the area that they're being taken out of?
So there are some flowering Forbes in here.
Or flowering bushes, but not flowers.
Flowers.
No perennials.
No perennials.
Well, part of that native mix will have, like Michael was talking about downstairs, there will be flowers in that mix. And also in the stormwater areas, there will be, but we can take that back and just make sure we've got a good mix of.
I'd like a little more of the look that's there currently than just, you know, grasses with an occasional flower in it. It's been a showpiece, where people bring people from out of town, and it was one of the things I know on the committees for Light Rail that we've talked about maintaining at least what was there and not having it go downhill for look, and this to me doesn't seem to be maintaining what's there. And I'll admit, I'm concerned about that, and people have been reassuring me for a couple of years about that, and I don't see that here. So that needs, in my mind, to change.
Sure. So we can go back and double-check what we're doing with that native grass in those landscape areas. I will note, the landscape budget was cut by 75% along the line, so this base project design for landscape reflects that reduction. So there's just a limit to what we can do.
But does that 75% cut pertain to new landscaping, or does it also apply to replacing what was destroyed?
It's both.
It's both.
It's both, yes. So we're stretching as far as we can.
Technically, you could dig up what's there and replant it. A lot of it is perennial. A lot of it is things like daylilies and things that are very easy to grow, come up by themselves. It doesn't have to all be just native grasses, which sort of take over, and, you know, an occasional wildflower. Those are nice, but it's not as nice as having some banks of daylilies, which grow themselves. And like I say, you technically, depending on when you're doing this, but... And like I say, you technically, depending on when you're doing this, but if you're doing this in a time of year that's appropriate, could dig them up and replant them, and it wouldn't have you any cost. You don't look at all convinced about that.
Well, there's a cost of labor to picking something up, putting it somewhere, trying to make sure it lives, and then transplanting it back. So, I mean, we can bring those up as far as...
You know, it just strikes me that, you know, some of the types of things that they've got there wouldn't be expensive. And, you know, we were promised that they would maintain some of the look since they were taking out all these flowers. I know the budget's been cut, we've lost one full station and one probable, second probable station. And I don't think asking that it maintains some of the look is too much to ask. Under those circumstances, we're talking about relatively minimal costs.
We will do our best.
Any other questions? Ryan, one of the things that I noticed in the packet is discussion about the existing monument sign by the intersection of Technology and Prairie Center Drive. It says it will also likely be impacted and need to be moved or replaced.
Yes.
So that sort of thing, there's money to replace the sign?
Yes, so those are owned not by Southwest Transit, but with the association.
Okay.
So that would be part of the right-of-way negotiations.
Okay.
So yes, there's estimates in there for those. There is one at Culvers 2, which is a little more questionable if we need to replace that one. We will be doing monument signs at the two entry points for wayfinding into the Southwest Station. So, yeah, there is going to be some work with those monument signs out there.
Okay. And when you say monument signs, you're talking about something substantial, not a metal sign on a pole?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
We can speak later.
Sure. Yeah, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? Okay?
I wish I could pull up for everyone what I'm looking at, and I have on my screen the picture of one of the corners of the parking deck itself. And, you know, we've all traveled around the country and seen some notoriously ugly parking decks, you know, where they just build them and put stuff up, you know, fencing, whatever. And I got to admit, I'm not thrown for this one at all. I think it looks very industrial. We have a beautiful parking deck right now with Southwest Metro, right next door with nice brick and the copper. And then right next door is going to be, you know, the poor cousin. And I just, I feel like that even if in the cor, and I'm sure money's super a big part of the problem here, but even if the corners could be the brick, you know, for just six or eight feet, just so that then the, this concave pieces are not just wrapping it, because I think it's the wrapping it that's causing it to look really... I'm trying to be nice, not very pretty.
Too contemporary?
It's not even contemporary, it just, it looks like it's cheap, looks like they put it up cheap. And I think if they just did brick on the corners and did some other fancier things, it could just look incredibly nicer. But if that's, you know, if money is the issue, then money is the issue, then we can only do what we can do. But it might not, I don't know what the costs of some of these materials are. So I just wanted to lay that out there, my thoughts.
Other comments?
I just wanted to say, I think beauty might be in the eye of the beholder. I actually really like that fluidity that it gives on the corners. And I think we have a lot of brick already. So I'm not refuting, I...
Sure.
I respect and appreciate your point of view.
Well, I respect yours, seriously.
I just kind of saw it differently. It looked more artistic to me somehow, and less, well, maybe solid, and maybe that's what you're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, we'll take motion.
Well, I can make the motion.
Sure.
So I would move to close the public hearing. Oh, we did that formally? No, we didn't do it formally. Move to close the public hearing and direct staff to continue working with the Southwest LRT Project Office to refine plans for the proposed parking ramp and site improvements in accordance with staff, planning commission, and city council comments.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for the presentation. Payment of claims. Oh, I'm sorry, we have Dos Manitos is our second public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The Dos Manitos PUD Amendment is our second public hearing. That's a PUD district review with waivers and a site plan review on just under one acre. This is the Dos Manitas daycare on Martin Drive. And actually, the project is really the trail for the Martin Blue apartment project next door. It's the trail that would go through the Dos Manitas property, which requires action for the PUD amendment for Dos Manitas. So you may recall from earlier in the fall, there was a discussion at the council with the developer of Martin Blue of looking at alternatives for the trail that at the time had been a three-foot proposed nature trail that would go into the wetland, and that earlier staff had been exploring potential options to relocate the trail. One of the main options had been an eight-foot Potuminas Trail that connected to the regional trail through the Dos Manitas daycare. We found out through those discussions that would affect the proof of parking for Dos Manitas, and through staff discussions, discussion with the developer, direction from the city council, we felt that if there is a future use beyond the daycare, because the parking for the daycare is perfectly fine. The proof of parking issue relates to any future separate use that would occur. So you could see that the amendment we're actually bringing to you states that we would reduce the number of required parking spaces with the proof of parking for Dos Manitas for something in the future, so we can accommodate the trail coming through this property. So that's what's before you tonight. The planning commission actually recommended denial of the project, and I think the feeling there had been more concern with the parking that may not exist at the council or staff recommendation level. And also that maybe there were alternatives for the trail that existed on the sidewalk right on Martin Driver around the regional trail. We still feel at the staff level that there is value in coming through the back of the Martin Blue property and across Dos Manitas and connecting to the regional trail. So it's still the recommendation to do that. And I think in your packet, you saw that we had the handout of the exact layout of the trail. And the Martin Blue developer is here tonight to answer any questions you may have, in addition to staff. But we have the trail in front of you and are recommending approval of the PUD amendment.
Okay, thank you. Pretty straightforward. Are there any questions for Mr. Carston, for Mr. Getchow? Okay.
Does the Dos Manitas property give up any rights of value that, to its future, like if it were to become a restaurant, it needs these 12 spots in 15 years? Do they, I guess I want to say, oh, but do they have rights to those 12 additional spots?
I don't, I think that the issue would be that there is room for some additional parking, not as much additional parking as we originally thought. So there would be an easement put in for the trail, and the hope would be, whatever parking might be necessary, we'd find another location off-site, overflow or somewhere else to accommodate if it is a future restaurant or retail use. It would just not be over where the trail is, because we'd want there to be an easement where the trail is, and you wouldn't take the trail out and then put parking at a later date. If there's a different use, we'll have to find a different solution if that use requires more parking. It's still possible that there may be another use that wouldn't require as much more parking.
Mr. Jeremiah, did you have a comment?
Your Honor and council members, just a little clarification. The variance to the parking would actually be granted, or I should say waiver, because it's a PUD, would actually be granted. So we wouldn't be able to control retail use coming in, because the variance would already be granted. So I think that, you know, the potential concern that you might want to consider is overflow parking if that case comes about, because that's, you know, really the likely scenario. A restaurant, if it's a sit-down restaurant, it would be a different situation and parking calculation. But, you know, some of the types, the things that we have at Southwest Station Retail could also go in, and that's where we do, you know, potentially see some issues, but we don't have a huge concern. We think that it's kind of an isolated area, and it doesn't impact, you know, others besides, obviously, the developers coming before us for this change. Also, people should have their eyes wide open coming into the deal and know that it has limited parking. So we do feel that, you know, there might be some effect on the value of the property. But again, we believe that the daycare is a long-term use, so we don't have substantial concerns there. Just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Case?
I don't think so at the moment.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment within the community commercial zoning district on .97 acres, and direct staff to revise the development agreement incorporating staff recommendations and council conditions for the Dos Manitas Jardin daycare property, and direct staff to revise the development agreement incorporating staff recommendations and council conditions for the Mitchell Crossing 2012 Martin Blue property.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming, Mr. Carston. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher Wixstrom? Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye.
Next portion, which is substantial for the agenda, is appointment, appointment process. This is something we go through every January. And the first item is the resolution designating the official city newspaper. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution designating the Eden Prairie News as the official city newspaper for 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is a resolution designating the official meeting dates, time and place for the Eden Prairie City Council meeting in 2016, and appointing the acting mayor. We have received a list of meeting dates at our meeting tonight and agreed upon those dates, and I would hope we would designate again Councilmember Case as the acting mayor.
I move to adopt the resolution designating the official meeting dates, time and place for the City of Eden Prairie Council in 2016, and appointing Councilmember Case the acting mayor.
All in favor? Or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item, C, is a resolution appointing all of us commissioners to the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
I would move to adopt the resolution appointing city council members to serve as commissioners for the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and appointing Nancy Tara Lukens as chair, Rick Getchow as executive director, and Councilmember Nelson as secretary for calendar year 2016.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The next resolution appoints a director and an alternate director to the Suburban Rate Authority. Our Public Works Director, Robert Ellis, has served as a director, and Councilmember Case is alternate in 2015, and are proposed to do so again. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt a resolution designating Robert Ellis as the director and Councilmember Case as the alternate director to the Suburban Rate Authority.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is the appointment of the mayor as delegate and council members as alternates to the National League of Cities.
Move to approve the appointment of the mayor as delegate and council members as the alternates to the National League of Cities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is appointment of the mayor to municipal legislative commission.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is appointment to Southwest Cable Commission. Councilmember Nelson served on this commission in 2015 and has agreed to, again, correct? Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve appointment of Councilmember Nelson to the Southwest Cable Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is the appointment to the Eden Prairie Community Foundation. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Councilmember Case to the Eden Prairie Community Foundation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is appointment to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
I move to approve appointment of Councilmember Aho to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is appointment to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Move to approve the appointment of Councilmember Butcher Wixstrom to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is the appointment of the Assistant Weed Inspector.
We're laughing because the mayor is the actual weed inspector for the city of Eden Prairie. I would move to appoint Jeff Cordis, I hope he doesn't work too hard, because the mayor needs to be doing his job, as Assistant Weed Inspector for the city of Eden Prairie.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is a resolution appointing municipal representatives to the Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees.
Move to adopt the resolution appointing Councilmember Case and Sukka Cheever to the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is the Southwest Transit Board Council Representative. We have currently two representatives from our city council on the Southwest Transit Commission, myself and Councilmember Aho. And it's proposed that Councilmember Aho, who is current, will currently, is currently serving as elected representative, and I am serving as the appointed representative, and we will continue doing that.
I would move to appoint Councilmember Aho to the Southwest Transit Board as the Eden Prairie Council Representative for a three-year term to end December 31, 2018, which requires that he run again. I think he's going to make an announcement tonight.
Now, wait a second. Wait a second, this does not sound like what we agreed to. It should be flipped.
No, I apologize. So I think the intent is that Councilmember Aho is the council representative, but the term is a two-year term, that one won't end in December, end of '17. So Councilmember Aho has finished the first year of his three-year term, and we want to correct this, because Southwest Transit had something different than we had, so...
Who's the council representative? Who's the appointed representative?
Right, so I don't want to mix you up with what we had on record and what Southwest Transit has, but what you want to do is appoint Aho as the council representative, but it's for a two-year term. That's the mix-up, is the term ending. It's the mayor as the appointed representative for the three-year term. That's where the mix-up is.
So I, no one seconded, so I can make my motion again. Move to appoint Councilmember Aho to the Southwest Transit Board as the Eden Prairie Council Representative for a two-year term to end December 31, 2017.
Correct.
Requiring him still to be re-elected again. Go ahead.
I second that.
Now, Mr. Getch, Mr. Russell, I know you serve as the attorney also for Southwest Transit. Does this sound consistent with what the bylaws were?
Well, the, the, the presentation to the commission was to get the term staggered again in a proper order. So that's what the commission was concerned about. So this does that. I just thought at the workshop, it was, it was stated as the other way around, that the mayor would be the elected representative, Mr. Aho would be the community appointed representative, but for purposes of the staggering, it doesn't matter.
No.
And I'll add, you know, all jokes aside about, you know, who may be in office next year or the year after, you do these appointments at every meeting in January.
We do.
You do do that. So we're just trying to sync with Southwest Transit, but they might be saying, you know, for, I mean, I'll use the example of if someone were to resign, not even run again, that both the city and Southwest Transit could appoint someone. So we're doing this every year, it doesn't commit anybody to be on that term.
Right, thanks for clarifying that with my humor.
There may be a few people out there that think, I don't want to read into anything, because we will do this each year, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
We should add, we should add the, add your appointments.
Both at the same time. I would also then move to appoint Mayor Tara Lukens to the Southwest Transit Board as the Eden Prairie Appointed Representative for a three-year term to end December 31, 2018.
Second. Excellent. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item is a report from our city manager on the board and commission recruitment Next item is a report from our city manager on the board and commission recruitment process.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. This also is that time of, of year where we begin recruiting for new board and commission members. As you know, on our six boards and commissions, we have a mixture of residents that come forward to volunteer their time and energy and effort to really, again, volunteer, to give of their time to serve as volunteers on our boards and commissions that advise the council on many different matters. In some cases, with the planning commission, are actually part of, um, you know, voting recommendations as part of televised meetings that occur sometimes more than, more than once a month. And there is a, a mixture of staggered terms throughout all the boards and commissions. So, each and every year, each board or commission will have at least one, if not two or three of their five or seven members whose terms may end or they reach term limits. So, we are always, um, at this time of year, looking for, uh, more of our residents to volunteer their time in a number of different areas, planning commission, park and recreation, natural resources and the arts, conservation, heritage preservation, human rights and diversity, um, even our Board of Appeal and Equalization that deals with, with assessing matters. So, starting, uh, next week, our process, or at least we're asking you to vote on this timeline and process, we would spend from January 11th to February 5th recruiting members and advertising and getting the word out that we have openings on our commissions. And the deadline then for application would be on February 5th. Then, as a city council meeting, a, a third council meeting in February for the city council, you actually interview each and every applicant. And I always like to mention, each and every year, that's not necessarily common with other communities or cities in Minnesota. Appointments may come forward by the mayor, councilor, or there'd be action on a separate basis, but in Eden Prairie, you actually interview each and every person that wants to come forward. So, that makes the process, I would say, even more, uh, you know, more important than, than what you normally would see. So, on February 23rd, the council will interview candidates to appoint at your March 8th meeting, and they would then begin, uh, serving in April following an orientation in late March. If, if they can survive the orientation from the city attorney and from the city manager, then they come back in, in April, they are, and all have to date, have come back following their orientation and have served on a commission. That will be our process, uh, for this year. So, we'd ask, first of all, this is a chance to get the word out, one of the first chances to get the word out, and then to ask you to approve the timeline for our board and commission interview process.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow? If not, is there a motion for approval?
I move...
You can go ahead.
You go ahead, you go, you go.
Okay, I move to approve the attached timeline for recruitment of board and commission candidates and set February 23rd as the date for commission interviews.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then I hope that we can really do a good job of communicating this to the public that, that we need people for these commissions, and I would especially like us to make a concerted effort to get younger people involved on a lot of the commissions so that we have some new leadership coming forward in the community, because we don't really have that many young people that are involved in our commissions. We love the ones that we have, and they've been doing a great job, and would love to have more of them. All right, Super Value Lease Amendment is the next item. Good news from...
Yes, yes, Mayor, good news.
...the leasing our facility.
Yes, and, you know, I want to mention with the commissions, I think, um, you know, I, I made a note about recruitment of, of younger people. We do have a students-on-commissions program as well, and that's...
Right.
You know, that's when you're in high school, and hopefully that's a stepping stone for some people to maybe come back after they've been students. So, maybe we can do some outreach with some former students that have been in commissions that are still in the community and want to serve as regular members of the commission. So, we'll look into that.
It's also nice to get...
You do have to reside in the community, but...
Young families, though, people that are old enough that they have grade school children, maybe, or almost grade school children that are coming from a different time in their life than all the people saying that they've now retired and would like to give back to the community, so...
The only hard thing is when you have young family, you don't have time.
Yeah, right. That's exactly true.
Yeah, I, I think we've had a mix. I think we've had a mix of retirees wanting to give back, active, working professionals to, um, people that are currently raising a family, so hopefully we keep that mix.
Okay.
Uh, but, Mary, yes, you're right, the Super Value Lease Amendment, this is good news. As you know, uh, just over a year ago, we signed a lease with Super Value for just under 44,000 square feet of lease space in city center. What makes Eden Prairie unique is that we are in a building that wasn't built as a city hall. It was a building that the city purchased, and then the city itself is only an occupant of just over half of the building. As you know, we have the schools' community education, uh, operation leasing space, and we had previously had, uh, C.H. Robinson leasing space from the city in our city center. And as I said, a little over a year ago, we were able to lease just under 44,000 square feet of close to the 74,000 square feet that was available for lease to Super Value. Tonight, we're coming forward with an additional 13,825 square feet to bring Super Value's lease total to 57,821 square feet of space. The other good news associated with that is because the space is contiguous and there will be tenant improvements, we had requested that the new space lease be on the same point in time as the additional 43,000 square feet. So, in return for a small reduction in the overall rent of all the space, Super Value agreed to a 15-month extension. So, in a way, the entire lease of the 57,000 square feet starts over now. So, that would be an additional year on the original space, and then that would be a five-year lease on all the space. That still leaves the city 16,000 square feet that we are, will be actively marketing, but as I said, uh, the almost 58,000 square feet of leasable spaces at, at market rent is, is a very positive development for the city. So, you can see in the packet and on the agenda, the detail within the five years of the lease, and the term of the lease, as I said, uh, would run through now 2021, June of 2021. And, uh, there's a lot of help at the city in terms of our facilities manager, finance manager, economic development manager, and others that kind of have been that team working on the lease. So, tonight, we also have our commercial real estate agent here to answer any questions that you may have in addition to staff on the new terms on the new lease, but, uh, we request your action on this, uh, lease amendment tonight.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Getchow or the lease agent? Yep.
Mr. Getchow, um, the 16,000 that's left look like they have the first right of refusal on that. Do we have a inclination that they might be interested in that, and does that impact any of our current tenants in there?
That's, that's a good question.
Yeah, I guess thinking the foundation, maybe, and they're not really a tenant, but go ahead.
That's a good question, council member Case. So, first, start with the foundation last. It's our intent to continue to accommodate the foundation in this building. If for some reason, whether it's Super Value or someone else were to come along, we would